Hello.
How you guys doing?
Good.
Hey Matt. Can't beat it.
Um, can we sit over there? Cause I'm gonna have people sitting there, so if you could sit over there so you don't have to get up and move to get people's faces and stuff, please.
They put me in the corner, so.
I don't really do well with the assigned seating unless they give me my own table up front like the others.
Well, we're swink and that's how it goes, I suppose. So you'll have to go back there.
We're swink and that's how it goes, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. Wow.
You can leave.
Oh, this is for.
Seven oh one on Wednesday, January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, I'd like to call the general meeting of the town swing to order. First item of business will be the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a vote call, please?
Chris Morland.
Here.
Raymond Gonzalez.
Here.
Matt Kruger.
Here.
Robin Platt.
Here.
Tina Fraker. Amy Place. Rich Dale.
Here.
Philip Mellon.
Here.
Jim Benzil.
Thank you. Next item will be the consensus items that we received in our email package. Can I get a motion to accept those, please?
I motion we pass the consensus items.
Second. I have a motion by Robin and a second by Matt, you pass the consensus items. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. We'll move to number four, audience participation. Mister Wallace.
Good evening.
Would you love to hear from me, sir?
Yeah, sorry, I've been a little busy lately. Um, just wanna give you a recap of two thousand twenty-four. Um, the Swink area, the sheriff's office pulled, I believe it was forty-nine cases. Uh, unfortunate the way that system pulls it, it shows the area and I have to physically go through. But we pulled approximately forty-nine cases, countywide, we pulled approximately nine hundred and sixty-seven, so a very small percentage of that being in the town this way. Um, we are currently full staff at the sheriff's office, I mean, seven deputies, one of those is a detective. Um, and his job is just to work primarily on major cases and cases that need additional follow-up. Uh, we have moved into the new sheriff's office, we did that a couple of months ago, and we do anticipate the jail to be opening, uh, to be completed at some time in March. Um, with opening, um, springtime, early summer.
Great to hear. Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience with something that's not on the agenda? No? Okay, let's move to old business, uh, first one will be the water tower grant.
They're still just in the process of.
I don't know, is there anything new since December? Yeah, we're kind of, we did get, uh, I don't wanna say here. All of our paperwork got accepted, that type of thing, now really the ball's kinda just in their court waiting, waiting for the hearing and our big meeting we have to do. Kind of a holding pattern, I guess, really all there is to say about that. Anybody with a question? Alright, okay, we'll move to the next item, which would be the job descriptions. Mister Maloff, where are we there, sir?
Um, both Jim and Amanda sent me their job descriptions, I reviewed them, I think I sent an email back, said, from my perspective, they looked okay. If you wanted me to rework them in terms of format, I did not do that, but I'm glad to do that.
Anybody with a question there? No?
Did everybody read them?
I did.
Well, that's positive. I go back.
I have white, I have not read them.
Yeah, I gotta read them, do all that stuff.
So can we table this and all of us will read them this month and we'll have a discussion next month? Would that be how we do that, Mister Maloff, sir?
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. I motion we table the job descriptions and tell all of council has time to review them. I didn't even see your email until earlier today.
Sorry.
Give you a second there?
No, I don't think we have that.
I don't think we have to all have one.
But thank you. Alright, next item of business will be landlord and utilities.
Me again, huh? Okay. Uh, I have sent Amanda and she has sent to me, uh, different suggestions as to how to handle the process. It's a continuing process, not a problem, not only in Swink, but everywhere, and the solutions aren't real obvious or good, it's just whatever works in the community. But the, probably the best way to consider it is, the landlord is always on the hook until the landlord and the town agree that the tenant should be on the hook. And the conditions that should happen to make the tenant on the hook, and one, the tenant signs the application, and two, uh, there's a valid legitimate lease that says that the tenant is gonna be responsible for the utilities. How you go about confirming that is always a problem, and La Junta, what they do is they require, uh, the person signing up to actually produce a lease signed by both the landlord and the tenant, uh, before they'll transfer the utilities. Uh, and I've given Amanda a, a draft of that. Uh, it's kind of however you wanna proceed, again, there's no right way, no wrong way, it's just trying to figure out what will work within your community.
So, we're talking about when tenants go without paying the bill, right?
No, or just before that.
Or just leave.
Well, this is why this has come to this, I think, is because tenants just leave, and then landlords are like, well, how come they don't get, well, it's your house, like, they don't know.
So like in Rocky Ford, when we, when I was usually at Click There, their procedures, and I believe there still are, is you have to have a lease in the landlord and the tenant's name for it to be in the tenant's name. But, the tenant then moves out and leaves a hundred and eighty dollar outstanding water bill. The city of Rocky Ford will not reopen that water line until the, then till the bill is cleared under anyone else's name.
Well, there are two things happening there, one is there should be a security deposit posted by the tenant if we put the utilities into the tenant's name.
I do.
The best way to avoid bad debt is to not incur when the debt is initiated, so I always tell landlords, the best lease there is is knowing who your tenant is gonna be and whether they're gonna pay the debt. So that's one of the reasons in terms of due diligence that the town clerk would be looking at the lease to see what's going on. Secondly, the security deposit's gonna help us a little bit, and that should be posted by the tenant if the utilities are gonna be transferred into the tenant's name.
And it needs to be a large enough deposit to cover one month average bill.
It's one fifty, and our minimum is one oh five, is the minimum.
And our ordinance book requires or allows that we can hold the landlord responsible for unpaid water and sewer. So they're on the hook by ordinance if the tenant doesn't pay, and yeah, that's a sore spot with landlords, but that's life and the fast money.
So should maybe I, whenever someone new comes in, do I send the, do I let the, what do I, do I get the lease and look at it?
Yeah.
But what if they don't, like, half of the time they just come in or they call me and say?
Okay, first thing is, we gotta pass that procedure, uh, as a, a policy, this board's gonna have to deal with it, but just to be funny about things a little bit, uh, about six months ago, I moved my office from, from one location to another, and I've been the city attorney in La Junta for thirty-six years, it's not like I was unknown. And, thirdly, I wrote the damn policy that was put into place, and when I went to have my utilities transferred over, they wouldn't do it until I complied with the ordinance, silly people that they are. Uh, so, you know, it's up to the, the clerk to be hard and fast about, well, I want to see this and this is satisfactory, and our policy would outline what you're gonna be looking for. So we're gonna try to take as much of the discretion away from you and make it hard and fast that the lease has gotta have a approval of the landlord, it's gotta be clearly stating who's paying the utilities, and that there's got to be a security deposit. So if they have those things, then you're free to transfer it, if they don't, too bad, too sad.
Okay. Does that make sense? Does it seem like that would work for you?
The, it's gonna, it's gonna be a pain to get the stupid leases, but whatever. Cause everybody knows everybody, and.
I don't, personally, I don't think it's gonna change anything, you're just gonna make more paperwork and have you do more footwork to get, to make sure the lease is signed and all that stuff. We have the landlord, uh, property owner already responsible by ordinance. We have the utility.
Should I send a letter to the landlord, just as a?
Whenever, we have a security deposit for the tenant, so whenever they leave, whatever is left, then the landlord is responsible for it, I don't think we need to change nothing personally.
I personally don't either, I mean, I think it's better that way, and it's, it's that way most places, I think, anyway.
It is a inconvenience for the property owner, but.
That's how it is.
That's just part of their doing business, it really is, it happens all the time in Rocky.
Landlord, yeah.
They could leave the utilities in their own name and make the water bill part of their rent, I mean, that would be the simplest.
Sounds good to me.
But, yeah.
We can't tell landlords what to do, but by ordinance, they're already on the hook for unpaid bills, so.
Right.
The tenant moves out, the water gets shut off, it don't get turned on until the bill is satisfied.
That's how Rocky does it, too, so if you moved out and left a bad bill on Matt's house, and Matt was trying to move me in, Rocky wouldn't let Matt turn on that water until the bill was cleared from the first, from the first minute.
Yes, I think that's what it is, too.
And here's my response, which I never did like the idea anyway, so from a personal perspective, it does seem like a lot of work. But the problem is informing the landlord before the problem is created that they're on the hook. Because who's gonna complain is not ever gonna be the tenant, the tenant's moved to Manzanilla. But who's gonna complain is your good citizen landlord who doesn't understand the ordinance and doesn't appreciate the requirements. And that's, that was the reason to force them to have to produce a, a lease, is to force the landlord to deal with the issue ahead of time because we intended to enforce it against the landlord when the city didn't get paid. So, you know, how you deal with that issue of educating the uninformed, it's gonna be the landlord that's gonna be complaining, why are you picking on me? I've been a resident here all my life, why are you doing that?
But we have no control over who they rent to.
That's their choice.
But we have control over informing them that they're on the hook if the fees don't get paid.
And that's, should be part of the process. Is there a way that you could copy the bill that the tenant has and forward it to the landlord if it's outrageous or whatever, it's not getting paid on time?
Well, there's a federal trade commission ruling that says that utility bills are private and privileged information, so they're not for general exposure. The, again, I would, I don't like the ordinance from a personal perspective, but it does accomplish these things. It puts the landlord on notice, and it tells the clerk by looking at the lease who she's supposed to bill the utilities to. But, you know what, they've got a lot of utilities sold for a lot of years without that ordinance, so it's just whatever you guys wanna do.
But we already have the ordinance in place, correct?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, so what?
So then nothing will change?
No.
Well, I had brought it up because someone had, um, Crowley had sent me what they did, and I thought, hey, that'd be, you know, maybe a good idea. And then the more, Mr. Maloff and I started talking, I'm like, oh gosh, no, I don't know, this is a law.
Matt, most, all the landlords are aware of, that they're on the hook for utilities, Black Hill does too, if it gets out of hand.
Now, if someone gets shut off, can the landlord be notified or not? Or is that the federal law?
If they're shut off, the answer is yes.
Yes.
Cause it reverts back to the landlord and the landlord's on the hook.
Okay.
Everybody in grants to leave it the way it is?
Yep.
Right? No, actually, no, then. Uh, next item will be, uh, the Sursa report and findings for the accident on the building, I don't know if you guys read all that in, in the email. Um, without.
I did, I was looking at the dollar amounts and stuff like that, do you have a, was the plan just to?
That's the other thing that we need to find out, so Jim gave me this wifi, oh, this is the, um,
That's the repair.
This is the repair that will be turning into the insurance that he just brought me today. Um, seventeen thousand five sixty-three for the lift station, broken ring and lid.
Is it done?
Mm-mm, this.
It's just a proposal.
This is just the proposal part of it, um, the quote, I guess. And then, um, we didn't know if we were gonna go with containers or rebuild. Sursa said that, I mean, we could do either, but they will send us, they, I just got thirty-eight thousand dollars today from them, or yesterday, and I deposited it today. Um, and that's for the building contents.
Norers.
Mm-mm-mm. Yes, it's for all that stuff. Um, once we, so like on the lawnmowers, we got a separate check for like forty-two hundred, I think, and that's the depreciation part of it all and blah blah. But if we find a mower that's for the forty-two hundred, cause we only got twenty-three hundred, I think, for, for them. And if we get, if we buy another mower and it ends up to forty-two, I have to send them a receipt, and then they will give us the remainder of that money. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's clearly gonna cost more than we got, so, yeah.
Yeah. And then, you guys probably seen the quotes from the lawn mowers. There was three lawn mowers in there, um, on that quote, but we only had two lawn mowers in the shop. So I'm not real sure how that, what that's about. And then if we wanted to go ahead and make a four by, a forty by thirty steel building to put back up here instead of the storage units or whatever, um, we did get, or Jim did get a estimate from Bee Hill CNC for that steel building and what it would cost to put one back up. But this does not include demolition. TLM, huh?
What does demolition?
This, Bee Hill, so this I just got today, cause Jim had a last minute thing, so I didn't get a chance to forward this to you guys, so if you wanna look, that's the, um, what it would cost to put a new steel building back up. Um.
So from them, forty by thirty is a hundred and seven thousand dollars.
And that does not include demolition. Now, TLM is also going to put a bid in that Jim's waiting on, and it will include demolition, because they can, they have the, the means to demolish it. Where Bee Hill construction does not.
Do we have to put that up to bid, or can we just do it?
And that was the other thing we had to see. We can?
Yes.
Cause I, we didn't know that either, and.
We haven't decided if we want it, where we even want it, yeah, right, I thought we, we talked about moving it away from the highway.
So if we wanna get the, the money, though, we have to put it.
They, they won't give us money to put a storage unit in.
They will give us the thirty-eight thousand that we have, but if we don't. Ah, it confuses me what you said, hold on, let me see, there's my notes, hold on.
I would assume that they would give us the money regardless for the building we already have, and then.
They're gonna give you actual value reimbursement, but they're not gonna give you replacement of the kind of reimbursement.
Right.
So they will send thirty-eight thousand, that's what I got, for building repairs, that was what it was for. Forty-seven K minus the depreciation of the twenty-seven thousand leaves a thirty-eight. We can use a portion of this for storage bins, if we decide to build, they need the estimates, and we can get more from the depreciation. So if we wanna use the storage bins, we can use this money to get storage bins, we don't get any more money. If we wanna go ahead and build, they need to see the estimates, and then we, or, yeah, the estimates, and then once they do that, they would give us that, the rest of the money to help on that. Does that make sense? So if we use storage bins, we can use this thirty-eight thousand that we got, we don't get any more.
That's for the building, that's not for contents.
Right, we already got money for contents, and that was ten thousand and twenty-three hundred, I think.
Ten thousand seven eighty-seven or whatever?
Yeah.
On the email?
Yes.
Okay, that's for the contents, and then thirty-eight three for the building.
Yes.
So we still have to have the building torn down, that's what I mean, we gotta.
Temoed.
Right.
And TLM's supposed to give us that bid to demo it, but they're gonna go ahead and, what Jim says is they're gonna put them both in the, in the quote and give us a heck of a deal. That's.
Hopefully that helps us in the building, cause then, pointless leave it there, no one can afford to tear it down, so.
Well, when they put the, the tent around the water tower to take care of it, maybe they can just take care of the building.
Right. Whoops. Hey, your building fell down, guys.
Yeah.
So, no, I do have a question, though, so. Um.
Let's just wrap it up.
Um. So if I remember right, cause I had, I had too much, there's a whole thing, basically a car flew off the highway.
Went right into the building.
Is there any recourse for us to go after the driver's insurance, so we don't have to eat the car?
That's what our insurance.
That's already happened, you make a claim.
Oh, okay.
To Sursa, you segregate your rights, and then they chase after the bad guy.
They give us the money for what they send out and depreciate and quote, and what we lost and blah blah blah, and then they go after them, we don't have to deal with it.
Okay, okay. Okay.
Which is kinda nice.
Yeah. Guess have to make some decisions, though, what we wanna do, though, is we already got a water tower to fix.
Right.
Even another seventy-some odd thousand dollars on a steel building.
Well, but I think insurance.
Well, we have to, we have to get a proposal together and submit to insurance, and they.
As long as we put the same size building back up there.
What do you ask me?
Who? Me?
Well, I just, just kinda spin out some ideas, like, if all we're getting is thirty-eight thousand, then we got some.
For now, if we decide to put the building back, the steel building back up, then we give them the estimate, they give us thirty.
Oh, okay.
Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, so it's not gonna, so we're not gonna have to eat, kind of swing seventy thousand dollars.
No, 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 cause I asked him to, cause I was like, so now what happens if?
I was just saying, at that point, level it and.
And do that, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay. There's our questions I had.
I guess food for thought for everybody, yeah, I think about our plan, what, what we'd like to do, obviously, we're gonna have to have a couple lawn mowers purchased for springtime, get here, but.
Oh, right, yeah, we gotta do that, but yeah, what we wanna do on the building, we're the best place, I mean, I, I don't actually, that building probably saved the water tower.
I, and I told Jim that the other day, I said, so if we don't leave it there, cause he was talking about getting storage units and putting them back behind or something, I was like, then we have to put something there to save the water tower pump, whatever it is, pump house, whatever it is. But he said it's gonna be a pole barn, a pole barn, steel pole barn.
Okay.
Is what they.
That one there, the hundred and seven thousand dollars?
Oh, for steel, not a wood.
Yeah, it's a steel.
Steel, where there was concrete flitters, point there, that's not.
Yeah, I mean.
I could buy a thirty by forty pole barn, it's another one for ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's the same, it's for a hundred and seven, now putting it up, it's a labor league, it's a help my, I hope.
That wouldn't be ninety thousand, I'm sure.
Right, I hope.
I said we should just build a rec center.
Rec center, basketball court.
Yeah, volleyball court, good golden.
There we go. Right there on the side of the highway, that'd probably be a good park.
I thought about that, too, all these kids running around.
Yeah, I think they're going to Concrete Berry, it was on that one.
Alright, so everybody keep that in mind, food for thought.
Yeah.
But we're gonna have to, I don't know how long we have to decide, but.
Two years, from ten thirty twenty-four.
Really?
Cause what the documentation says, so.
Alright, let's move to, uh, the rectory report.
It's all about details, Mister Dale, it's all about the details.
It wasn't fair, listen, I'll get it back.
Oh, yeah, we'll get it, we'll get it back here.
Alright, rec report.
Just please.
It's no good.
Um, you guys seen your.
It was so good before they printed it.
My, uh, clerk's report?
Yep.
Everything's going good, um. K through two is almost done, um, the games are being played in Rocky Ford and Los Animas, which several years it's only been in Rocky Ford, so it went to Los Animas, too. Third through sixth grade basketball started practicing over Christmas break using the new gym on Sundays, and a few coaches couldn't do Sundays, so they worked out something with the school. The school got ahold of me, they're gonna send me a, um, a schedule of all the, of all the practices that are going on, because they have more going on over there than I can keep track of, so they're gonna do that for me. Um, wrestling registrations are out, that ends the thirtieth, they start practice the second week in February around, and we'll use the, I'm pretty sure we're still use the wrestling room over there, but they're gonna have to give me another key because you can't go through the front doors, cause of the gym floor that they're tearing out. Um, we will not be hosting any games because of the gym situation. Um, I have offered to go help Sharaw if they need help, um, on a weekend that swings there, or even any other weekend, just so that, cause everybody's worried about being fair. So I said, well, I'll just go help, this is my first year that I've never hosted anything, so I don't know why all of a sudden we're like, this isn't fair, but.
How long do they think it's gonna take to get the gym fixed?
Um, not until after school ends, like this summer.
Was there a lot more damage than just the floor? I just couldn't think of, I couldn't think of professional crew, they got a lot of.
Put a floor down.
Mm-mm. But they're doing something, they're gonna, they're redoing the whole thing, and so I suggested to Chris Smith to maybe extend the wrestling room. Cause they were just gonna make all that back there storage, and I'm like, why don't you extend that, oh, no, it was to, um, it wasn't to Chris Smith, it was to, um, Kai, Kai Davis, cause he's on the school board. And he said, oh, that one hasn't been brought up yet, but I thought, shoot, that'd help, that's what they're gonna do, cause they're doing something totally, I don't know what they're doing, but they weren't gonna put bathrooms in there or something, I'm like.
Yeah, they gotta have showers and stuff.
Well, no, they're not gonna do showers, because nobody uses showers, although they're taking all those out. And they're just leaving the front bathrooms, so that there's at least bathrooms for people to use, cause they still do gym over there in the school. When nobody showers, they all, nobody showers anymore in those gyms. Not an old gym, maybe the new gym they do.
I'm doing.
Are you sure the rest of them still shower?
Yeah, I showered this morning when I woke up at one o'clock in the afternoon.
Hundred percent sure the rest of them shower.
Everybody, maybe they'll leave a shower for them. I really don't know if that's really what I, what I was sold. I really don't know. But.
That'll be a school decision, not our decision.
Yeah, not mine.
Yeah.
So, other than that, um, things are alright?
Thank you. Uh, next, uh, to your attention, the CML conference will be in Breckenridge this year from June twenty-fourth through the twenty-seventh.
I don't know, I'm busy.
I don't think anybody's interested in that, but Breckenridge, yeah, they host a nice event every year.
Wherever you.
Or every year they have it there, you know. Just so you know, if you guys are interested, you'd have the last.
We can't get another free scholarship, cause we got one last year, you can only get one, if you got it the year before, you can't get it the next year.
You gotta pay full price.
I don't know, it'll still be here, so I will be safe.
Thank you, sir.
You're good, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alright. That was just an FYI, alright, let's move to new business, uh, first one here is the South Swink Water. You guys remember they were asking for?
A, I don't know, there's twelve thousand, they don't know yet, fifteen thousand a day or something.
Thousand gallons, which we were.
Fifteen thousand is what they're anticipating today. Fifteen thousand is what they're anticipating a day.
Right.
That would be probably the max.
Which we were told is well within what we, without making ourselves short.
We would be able to supply that much water for them. The issue is gonna be rate. And I don't know how much you've shared with everybody on the rate.
So, okay, so a residential rate is twelve thirty-two for the first thousand, this is only soft water. After that, it's seven forty-four. For the thousands after that. So, last year. Because I didn't really know that there's different rates in different places. Um, he was getting charged the twelve thirty-two and the seven forty-four. And me and Rick, we decided this year that. That's not right, it's not a residential thing, so we did some calculations and we did. Fifteen thirty-two, I think, for the first thousand gallons.
What, what's happened is, the town of Swink has eight different rate schedules. For apartment buildings, um, duplexes. Per unit, so every apartment building is charged a different rate.
Right.
No fault of Amanda's by no means, probably no fault of Tessa's by no means, but the. That part, that rate schedule never got disclosed to anybody, the last time it was updated was two thousand and nine.
All of our five percent raises?
All the five percent raises, the three percent raises that we've had in rates. Affected everybody, except those eight individual accounts. Because.
And that's what this is, right here, your paper that you got. These are the places.
I don't know how you resolve that.
It's twenty-five percent that it hasn't went up.
Just announced new raises and what you have, this has lost money, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, it is lost money, but can, how can we get those eight accounts up to where they need to be?
Pass the resolution setting rates and then applies to them and that's the way it is.
But it's always applied to them, they just didn't know how to update date, they always, we never. She didn't know how. The eight, the eight people.
They is me or Tessa.
Well, no, I was talking about.
That couldn't update, didn't know how to update.
The eight that are individually rated in there by themselves, were not without the raise. That we voted for.
So they got all the.
They just didn't get it taken care of in the computers.
Only on the soft water, they got sewer, trash.
You checked.
And hard, yep, I did check those, there's only. Okay, so, Reed Holdings, Swink Manor, Art Valley Property, trash and sewer were okay, and hard water. Seventh Day Adventist, um, they had no trash, which I think they're out of town, so they can decide what they want, right? Okay, their trash and sewer were okay.
They don't have sewer out there either.
I'll have to look at that.
Hundred percent they don't.
Yeah, I bet you, you're right, I wonder if they've been.
Right.
All the, all the out of town people don't have sewer, city sewer.
Over here with the two houses. Those are weird, because they have one dumpster and they split everything. So.
Here's what I would suggest, before we go looking at the list to see who they are, just ignore who they are. Decide your rate schedule, let's pass a updated rate schedule, circulate it to all of the users. And go about your business, now in terms of what has not been applied, in other words, you had a rate schedule, but. You didn't charge them, uh, too bad, too sad to us, it just isn't gonna be something you can collect. That's why you're gonna publish a new rate schedule, and I would encourage you not to look at the names of the users. As you create the work schedule, the, uh, schedule.
The only reason why I have their names on here is so that we all know and that they're out, out of town or out of whatever, because. Some people don't know what we're talking about.
Classified as out of town users and who they are is not relevant to the. Determination of what the rates should be, that's the way you stay out of trouble with being accused of giving someone a favorable rate.
I understand that, but I also, I'll just talk to someone on their own and about what else, what else I have to say then.
So you draw up the resolution? Or do we do?
Yeah, or just you decide what your rates are gonna be and it's, the resolution isn't.
But we can't just say a rate.
Well, it should be the current rate right now.
Yeah, don't we just have two rates, we have an out of town rate and an in town rate, and a residential and business?
No, we have apartment rate that is per unit. So, every apartment building has a different number of units, so we need to figure out what that unit price is for apartment buildings.
And how do you figure that out?
Some of them are four, some of them are twelve, some of them are eighteen. So you can't, you can't just say apartments are this much, because you have eighteen different houses, if eighteen different couples living in one. Four are living in another one, so they can't be the same rate schedule, it's a price per unit. That's the way it was originally set up back in the eighties. And it got moved forward clear until two thousand and nine, then that, the ball got dropped. That's when we had disgruntled employees and they just left and didn't train anybody to do it right.
So are we gonna get the chance now, I mean, I, I don't.
Well, I know now.
We know what the rate should be now, so that's what we just need to identify, like Mr. Mallis said, we need to do some math. Figure out what the per unit rate is, instead of just saying, this apartment building has to pay this much. This one has to pay that much, just say per unit.
So my trash is like that, on, on those houses that we have, the trash is like that, the first unit is so much, then the second through nine is so much. And then this is so much, and they pay one seventy-seven a month, period.
And that's where the water should be.
Yes, but, yeah, per thousands of.
I guess that's where I'm confused, because it, it per by the gallon, it'll be the same cost, if it's twelve fifty-two for residential's. House, why wouldn't it be twelve fifty-two per gallon of that apartment? Are they individually metered by apartment?
One meter for all of that, and that's why it's different. Cause each apartment, if you did think of it like that, each apartment, if they were their own thing, would be twelve thirty-two, yeah, a thousand.
And that's where I'm confused, how we're individually building the apartments, cause like, again.
Tell me about it, I've been trying to figure it out.
That place in North Rocky Ford, or, yeah, North Rocky by the Fairgrounds. Yeah, they get one water bill from the city Rocky Ford and then they divide it between their tenant, I'm confused on, it's still per gallon.
They only get one water bill.
Yeah, but it's still per gallon, so wouldn't it be the residential rate at twelve fifty-two per gallon? I mean, why would it be different if they live in an apartment versus?
Won't necessarily be, but that, interestingly enough, that's what brings us back to that contractor we're talking about earlier. If you're just billing the apartment holder, whoever that is, Mr. Whoever that owns ten units. That's a, it should be based on usage, and then how he beats it out to the ten units, the ten tenants, that's his problem. We should be charging him.
And that is what happens.
Okay, and that's.
That is correct.
On usage.
Yes, that is correct.
By the gallon, not by the unit.
Yes, that is correct.
That's why, it's cause Rick was saying one unit's four and one unit's twelve.
Okay, so we'll say, I don't know the exact amount, but we'll say, um, one of them has sixteen units and they pay. Two hundred dollars a month for the first thousand gallons and then so much, and I can't tell you what the, there's so much after that. But then you have someone who has nine units or four units, they're only paying a hundred and fifty or a hundred and fourteen. Why is less units?
If I had, if I own apartments that have four units and he owns apartments that have sixteen units. Why isn't our per gallon usage for those units the same for whomever for the first breakdown, twelve fifty-two for the first thousand?
Be what it is.
If that's what it is, that's how the rate schedule drops off.
Fifteen people, fifteen households living in the apartment, you send out fifteen bills?
That's exactly what it is.
Yeah, so, it, I don't know where there's a per unit right now.
So why is the commercial rate for the apartment any different than the rate for myself or you?
We don't have sixteen different meters in there.
I know that, but we're still charging them a bill, they should pay the same amount per thousand gallon that we do.
We don't care.
As anybody does, everybody should pay the same amount, shouldn't they?
Same amount, if you're residential, it should be the same amount per gallon, if you're a business, the same amount, should be the same, in my.
Still usage, they're gonna use a lot more, but they're gonna get charged a lot more because of their usage.
Right, so there's twelve fifty-two for the first thousand gallons, and then after that.
I would think whatever our current. Twelve thirty-two to start, seven forty-four after, is that what, that's what we all pay, right?
That's what you guys all pay, yeah, but out of town is different.
What really comes into play is the sewer side.
Yes.
You get. Twelve or sixteen toilets flushed in, creating more flow for sewer than the four unit one.
Yes.
That thing, as far as water, it takes the same to do it, but that's why it must split up into different.
I'm sorry, Rick, you're right.
Different schedules, because there's different utilities all combined.
For the outtake.
So you can't just say, okay, this building for sewer is this much, this building for sewer is this much, the water is gonna be this much, you have to. Utility bill includes everything, so if they're on a different schedule, you have all the different lines on that schedule in there. So that's why the schedules are different.
Okay, so the simple answer is that you establish, we all agree on water should be based upon usage. And the bill goes to a meter, whoever holds the meter, and if there's four or five people. Sorry, guys. If there are four or five users, that's the landlord's problem, it's to how he separates that up. With regard to sewer, there's nothing wrong with creating classifications that say, okay, uh. Commercial users pay X, residential users for single family resident pays Y. Uh, apartment complexes with one to four users play, pays C, and break it down that way. Again, not making reference to who we're dealing with, but just as a classification, and have different rates for different users. Commercial rates traditionally have always been different than residential rates and, uh. Uh, apartment complexes or multiple user rates have always been different than single family, uh, users, so. Uh, if we need a guide, I'm not trying to tote that LaHana or Rocky Ford has a better system, but. They've already got those classifications, just copy what they've done. So it isn't uncommon to have a industrial rate, a commercial rate, a residential rate. A multi-family unit to which, you know, could be duplexes or whatever, but it's again associated with a meter. We'll get Amanda and I can talk about it. I'll push you in the right direction, okay?
Okay, don't push too hard. I fight back.
I know.
We could copy LaHana also on how they do, how they build us on our water. So we can build back, cause that's what Salsa wants to do, is use our rates, but he said, if you're gonna charge me. Almost eleven dollars a thousand, he can't recoup that.
I thought South Swink was gonna join with LaHana. I thought South Swink was gonna join directly with LaHana. Do you guys provide to South Swink?
They're, they want us to, cause they have a well that's going bad, or they have two wells that's going bad, and they want us to. We have, we are. Right now that does along Highway fifty. So can't, we don't have enough pressure to get it over the hill and serve the whole system, but we can do a third of their system.
So can we just throw then, on the new rate schedule, then a wholesale schedule? Yeah, recoup our costs, so we're, and, you know, so we're not out, but then, yeah, don't kill them on price either. And then we can build them at the wholesale schedule, whatever rate we determine on that, and then have the, the residential, out of town, commercial.
There's a classification for municipal users, there's a classification for bulk users, does anybody come to just fill up their tanks? Different rate, there, I'll show you what LaHana's done, I don't know what Rocky Ford's done, but I bet you it's just the same. And then you can create whatever classifications you want, put a price tag on it, and here we go.
Good, so we can table the South Swink water until we get that.
Well, South Swink water's different from what we were just talking about. South Swink water will probably be tabled though as well, because we gotta figure out a rate.
So we have a rate, yeah.
A wholesale.
Yeah, wholesale rate.
We're back.
And they're not.
Wouldn't that be for, um, rock washing? For rock washing, I don't wanna say a name.
You create whatever classification.
But wouldn't that be the same as a wholesale? No, okay.
He's gonna, he's gonna take that water, we're gonna sell it, and he's gonna resell it.
Oh, on, on the South Swink?
But South Swink will be.
That's why it's wholesale, okay, got you.
Alright, let's move to the Hancock and Frazier engagement letter.
I reviewed the letter, it's the same letter that we've signed here in another municipality since Rock was invented. Presuming you're satisfied with their work, I'd encourage you to favorably authorize the mayor to sign the document.
So I agree with you.
So we have to make a.
We need a motion to, to somebody to accept that?
I motion, we authorize the mayor to sign the Hancock and Frazier engagement letter.
Have a second? A motion by Robin and a second by Matt to accept the Hancock and Frazier engagement letter, and I will sign it. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Thank you. Alright, next item here is the personnel manual.
I took a look at your personnel manual, it's been probably six weeks ago, that was, uh, fun. Because what had been done is, when somebody saw something they liked, they cut it out, they pasted it, there was duplications, there was. Some provisions that appeared in three different places in the manual, it was, uh, definitely an interesting read. We edited it, uh, I've sent that to Amanda. I have not edited it in the context of substance, so for instance, if you wanted to say this is a day off. Or this is a half day off, I did not make adjustments there, what I did was make sure. The provisions that were said to be complied with other laws and that there were duplications or inconsistencies, so. I think it still needs to be reviewed for content, in other words, do we wanna give the day after Thanksgiving off or do we not? But other than that, it's good to go, I think. Amanda may do that differently.
Who's Daniel?
Amanda.
Daniel?
No, I'm just talking crap, cause I'm such a tight boy.
Oh, there is, why didn't it correct it for me, correct everything else?
I thought you were talking about Mr. Personnel Manual.
We got a new guy.
Yeah, a new guy, new employee.
Sorry, guys. I'm glad you did that.
And then the bid though, that we're, I was laughing, Rick and I were laughing, it states that the bid date is one fourteen twenty twenty-five on V Hill's bid. And that price is only good till January tenth twenty twenty-five, at the bottom.
So thirty-four days.
Right.
What it says. Details.
Okay, so back to the personnel manual, is there still some, some editing in?
Yeah, well, not editing, I think there needs to be review for substance, and that could be just. Um, one person doing it, reading it, saying, yeah, this is consistent with what we wanna do. Do you wanna have the day after Thanksgiving off or do you not? That's just a, that's a policy issue, I can't cover that.
So can we get a, just email out a copy to us and take a peek at it?
Sure.
Yeah. Just in the seller copies, we can review it and put it on next month's agenda. For all of us to put in our thoughts.
Well, if there are, let's make this orderly so you can get it in place next meeting.
Right.
If you have proposed changes. Submit that to Amanda, do not submit it by email to everybody, send it to Amanda, and then you'll have a laundry list of what we gotta go through.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, that'll work.
In February.
Thank you.
Yeah, open meetings, don't forget, you guys can communicate amongst yourselves.
Oh, so when we respond with ideas, it needs to go one to her, not the group, gotcha?
You got it.
Okay, our next item will be then, uh, the renewal. Or transfer of the liquor license, Mr.?
Okay, just today, like eleven o'clock this morning.
For real.
I got a call from the lawyer, he is representing somebody, but Wallace and Cell eight, their convenience store, there. You guys have a copy of that contract, and they wanna transfer the liquor license. There's a whole bunch of things that have to happen. Uh, kinda at the same time, and some of it's a little duplicative in terms of what's going on. There's a temporary license to allow them to continue to operate, there's the actual license transfer, which is put in this guy's name. So the most immediate thing is the temporary license, they expect that they will have. The application submitted by Friday, but that didn't do us any good. So the choice was to do what I'm gonna propose here now, or have a special meeting. So you guys can decide, but there's no real reason to have a special meeting. They are entitled as a matter of law to a temporary license, as long as we make an initial review of the application. See that it looks okay, generally speaking, not specifics, then we issue a temporary license. If they submit that to us before the next meeting, they're gonna be closing on the transaction, they're gonna wanna be operating. So my suggestion is that you leave it to myself and Amanda to review the application. And if we are satisfied, Amanda can issue a temporary license. They still have to go through the licensing transfer process, but that isn't, uh, really, uh, immediate. If we get the temporary license in place. And there's really no reason to not do the temporary license.
I motion, we allow our attorney and our town clerk to review the application status for the temporary license of Wallace Oil and the new buyer. And to allow them to issue the temporary license, alcohol license they need, if they find it so important.
Thank you.
Perfect, second.
I have a motion and a second by Matt to, uh, move forward with the temporary license. And, uh, our town clerk and lawyer will hash the detail about. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Close the booth. Thank you. Let's move now to some information here, uh, parking on the water meters.
We have some people that just park on the water meters, and every time we go to read them, every month, their vehicles are right on it.
Give them a ticket for illegal parking.
We weren't sure if that's where we were to go, so I said, um, we're gonna put it on the agenda and go from there.
There you have it.
And is there a certain?
Yeah, I don't know the exact citation, but it's in the Uniform Traffic Code about obstruction of municipal operations. There's, there's several different ways to do it, but it boils down to an illegal parking ticket.
And that's enforced by our code officers, Chris?
Yes.
And is there? A, a certain amount that we have, is there an ordinance that has?
You're right, someone's will come to court and the judge will issue a fine for it.
Okay. So citation is what needs to happen first, if it happens.
And then next on information, uh, what do you have with Historical Colorado?
Oh, Historical Colorado, I can't remember if I emailed you guys, the Zoom thing. Tomorrow's the meeting at ten AM. And there's a Zoom.
For the hearing to find out whether the building gets to be in the historical society or not.
Are you gonna attend the meeting?
I suppose I could turn it on. I suppose I could turn it on.
I'll be in the GME in Springs. I won't be able to turn it on.
Anybody wants to come at ten tomorrow? See whether we get to, to be added to the list.
They wanted to know if anyone wanted to speak, but I was like, I don't know, most people don't have enough time to get off work now, you know, like.
I'll see, I'll see what I can do in the morning, I'll. We'll figure that part out.
So that was crazy.
Alright, other information, Robin, do you have anything?
No, I've been up since five this morning, I'm ready to go when you are.
Thanks for your info. Rick? Matt?
Since Robin wants you to go, I'd like to discuss it.
No.
You didn't land like four hours of sleep in the last two days.
I know, I'm just dying over here.
So I guess you have no information to share either then?
Oh, I did, but I can't remember. It was something cool, I'll try to remember for next week.
It's brain fog.
Who else?
I don't have anything.
You have a motion to adjourn, please?
I motion, we adjourn.